Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Fran Baxter and I am the clerk of the zoning board of appeals, the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals, and this is Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, is after the hour of 6:00 PM, and I called the zoning board meeting to order. This meeting, this open meeting of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, the town of Northborough has advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible location. All members of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. Now I'll take a roll call vote, and after I say your name, please respond in the affirmative if you're here. Okay, Paul Tagleferry?
Here.
Brad Blanchett?
Here.
Mark Rutan?
Here.
Jeffrey Leland?
Here.
Susie Soliskin?
Here. I just want to apologize. I'm driving right now, but I'll be back and show my video when I can.
Okay, thank you. And for staff, when I say your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Here.
And Bob Federico?
Yeah.
Didn't miss anyone. Okay, thank you very much. So, as I said, it is past the hour of 6 o'clock, and the first item on our agenda is the election of officers. And so I do want to just to frame this for people who may or may not know, but we currently are a four-member board with two alternates for public hearing process voting only. The four current members are due to the fact that Richard Rand, who had served for more than 20 years, was not reappointed by the Board of Selectmen in March. So his term expired, and his seat will remain vacant until the Board of Selectmen, following the Northborough Town Charter, holds another appointment process, application process, interview, and appointment. So until then, the two alternates will, at the leisure of the chair, participate in the public hearings so that we can maintain a five-member voting board where votes are then four to five versus unanimous, or as needed, I should say. So, that being said, I'm just the clerk, but I'm getting to wear the big boy shoes today, so I just want to know if anybody wants to switch shoes with me.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to nominate Mark Rutan as clerk.
Okay, but we have to start with chair, but...
Oh, chair. So you said change your shoes.
Oh, yeah, no. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm only the acting chair. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So in that case, I'd like to nominate Paul Tagleferry as Chair of ZBA.
Mark, you're muted, but I can see your mouth. Sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. So Mark Rutan seconded. Brad Blanchett made the motion. Mark Rutan seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Brad?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Paul? You accept?
Aye.
Okay, there you go. All right. Well, Paul, I'm gonna, I'll go ahead and hand it over to you because I think it would be a lot easier for me than to not have to ask for nominations for the clerk position. So I hand it over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Fran. Thank you very much. Kind of big shoes to fill. So I guess if anyone wants to fill the clerk position or make a motion for the clerk position.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll nominate Brad as clerk.
And I will second that.
Okay, so a motion was made. Brad for clerk will take a roll call vote. Mark Rutan?
Aye.
Fran Baxter?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And Paul is aye. Okay, great. So it is, I think that is it for the first item on the agenda. So I think for the, you know, for at least this meeting, while we're, we just have a four-person group, I think what we'll do is we'll alternate the alternate votes. So Jeff, I think since Susie is not here for this first one, you'll be a voting member for this first hearing. So it is now past 6:10, so I think we can begin with the, to consider the petition of Stephanie Bayless for a special permit, and special permit with site plan approval for operation of a home personal service, real estate brokerage on the property located at 22 Stone Drive, map 14, parcel 52, in the residential B zoning district, and groundwater protection overlay area one. And I believe Stephanie Bayless should be on the call. Jim, you're gonna probably help me out on this one?
Yep, I just moved her over. She is muted with her video off at the moment.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Bayless?
Yes.
How's it going? So I guess, you know, just for starters, if you could just kind of give us a rundown on exactly what you're looking for and what you're, you know, you're asking for with a special permit?
Sure. If I can just, I just wrote up a quick summary intro. I own and live at 22 Stone Drive in Northborough. I'm applying for a special permit for home-based real estate office and have provided, I believe, all the required documents. I moved to Northborough to be closer to my grandkids and additional family and friends who live on the 495 Belt, and also because Northborough allows a real estate firm as a home-based business with a special permit. I live with two small and quiet dogs. I'm a good neighbor. I improve and maintain my property. I'm the owner and broker of MA Homes LLC, a real estate brokerage licensed in Massachusetts. I got my real estate salesperson's license in 2009, my broker's license in 2014, and opened my firm in 2014. My reputation in the real estate industry is spotless. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Realtor Association of Central Mass, currently serving as secretary. MA Homes LLC is a virtual brokerage. There's no brick-and-mortar office. We're a small brokerage. The three agents that work with me all work out of their homes. I do not meet with clients at my home office. Occasionally, an agent may drop off a deposit check, but that's actually becoming less common as more payments are done electronically. I use my home office for online work, paperwork, and communications with clients, agents, and vendors. There's no impact to the neighborhood. There's no traffic. There will not be a sign, only the business name on the mailbox and a small drop box on the garage. And per the requirement of Kristen Black from the Board of Health, the garbage grinder that was pre-existing in the house has been removed, and the permit's been signed off. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess we can start with any staff comments, Lori or Bob, about the special permit? Do you guys have any?
I did not have any issues with the grant of the special permit. Like, it was, it would fit well with the neighborhood and with the zoning district.
I agree with Lori. It's pretty benign. You know, Stephanie talks about what's going on at the, you know, for the residents. I've actually been out there for unrelated inspections on the home. I don't have an issue with it.
Okay. So I guess I'll just start with one question. Will you have any, like, business signs up at your house or on your lawn or any sort of thing identifying the house as a business?
No, I actually don't want to sign. I'll just have the name on the mailbox and a small drop box. It's essentially a mailbox on the garage door for agents to drop off checks. But no, I'm not requesting a sign. I don't want to sign.
Okay. Anyone else from the board that has a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Brad?
So, Ms. Bayless, where were you currently, where are you currently operating your business today?
I have been in Brimfield. I just recently moved here, so I'm looking at moving the business. I worked it out of my house in Brimfield previously.
The grandkids. That makes sense.
I'm sorry?
No, so you mentioned your summary for the grandkids, close to the grandkids.
Yes, they're in Westford, so Northborough is a lot closer than Brimfield was.
Yeah, hop on 495, you're there. Yeah, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else from the board with a question? Fran, is your hand raised? Sorry.
Thank you. That's okay, Mr. Chair.
It blends into your wall.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, that's a terrible color then. Anyway, I mean, I have absolutely no problem with it because I actually find it very interesting that home professional offices do not require a special permit, but home personal services and real estate broker is considered a personal service versus that professional service, which is very interesting. And I mean, it probably is not unique to Northborough, but I do find that that's an interesting distinction. I mean, we don't have to worry about hours of operation. There's not going to be anything. It's just you. There's no employees. So, yeah, so other than that unique distinction, I have no issues.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Brad?
More for town staff. I mean, again, I have no issue with what Ms. Bayless is doing here. I'm just wondering, though, because of COVID, are we going to see a lot more of these, like, home occupancy-type permits, you think? I wonder if we need to update our bylaws, things like that, but who knows? Yeah, sorry, Mr. Federico. Yeah, you have your hand up. No, you're muted, Bob.
Bobby, you're muted, yeah.
Okay, here I am. To answer your question, there's been a large influx of home businesses that have come to Northborough during COVID. Many of them do not need any board approval whatsoever, and those are the ones that you're not seeing. The only ones you are seeing where a, if you go into the use table, you know, determines whether or not it's planning board or a ZBA special permit. And it is in some of these certain circumstances where you're seeing them. There has been a slight uptick because you guys have been answering more of that call. I anticipate that to keep going on, but most of them are going in as by right use. I do a zoning interpretation of virtually everyone. And, you know, once I fit it into a, once I fit the use into a slot or a category, that determines whether or not it has to go to the ZBA or planning board or that you just move in and start working.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? All right, so this is a public hearing, so we can open up to the public. I don't see anyone on the phone, Jim, but what is the, if someone is on the phone, is it to raise their hand?
I believe it's star nine to raise their hand, and then if they're calling in solely through the phone, then it's star six to unmute themselves.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to raise their hand and ask a question or a comment, you could do so now. Okay, I don't, I don't see anybody. I don't know if anyone else does, from the people in the audience. I don't really have any other questions. Anyone else from the board have any other questions or comments for the applicant?
None. Mr. Chair, I'd like to close the hearing for 22 Stone Drive, special for Realtors occupancy.
Second that.
All right, Brad made a motion to close. Fran seconded the motion. Do a roll call vote. Brad?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bayless. We'll, we'll talk about this case probably after all the other cases as well.
Good. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank, thank you. All right, moving on to the second item. Second item in the agenda is to consider the petition of Jeremy Russell for variance for insulation of signage taller than permitted on the property located at 326 Main Street, map 47, parcel 92, in Business East Zoning District. I believe Mr. Russell is the applicant, and I believe I see him in the audience. All right. If you can just unmute Mr. Russell at this time?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry.
How's it going?
Good. How are you today?
I'm doing very well. All right, so I guess I'll also note that Jeff is going to be the voting member for this as well, since I think Susie's still in transit at this time. But Mr. Russell, if you want to just kind of just give us an overview of what it is you're looking for for the variance for the sign?
Sure. My name is Jeremy Urusell. I'm the owner of Design Center West. Purchased the business. It's a 44-year-old business. It was in the Solomon Pond Mall. Purchased it in October of 2020. My wife and I moved it in January 2021 to this Northborough location. We, as you can see in the packet, the existing sign that's there, it has an impediment to traffic visibility and snow storage. So what I'm looking to do is first to add the address to the top of the sign that's existing and raise the sign up approximately five and a half feet to allow for more traffic visibility and snow storage. We were planning to do a planter at the bottom, but have decided against that because that would, again, impede the traffic visibility there. We want to make it, make it look nice with seasonal flowers and just slow-growing shrubs to make that area nicer.
Okay. I guess I'll just start with an initial question. So the sign that currently exists is already at 17 feet. Is that correct?
That is the poles, the black poles on the each side. That is 17 feet.
Okay, so currently, the sign as it exists today is not, is sort of outside the bounds of what our bylaws state, right? And that's why you're looking for a variance?
Correct. The, the, the black poles are existing. Those were there before I moved in. I believe the, the height restriction right now is to the, the top of the exist, the new sign that we had put in, where the blue and white lettering is. That is the height that it's supposed to be at right at the moment. And if you flip to the next page, you'll see pretty much what we're looking to do at our logo instead of all the words because it's very hard to read once you're driving by.
I guess we could start with staff. Yeah, Lori?
I was kind of confused by this application, so I actually talked to Jeremy for some clarification as well as Bob. So it's my understanding that the black poles were installed prior to his arrival. We're not quite sure when that happens by looking at the file. So he installed his sign at the permitted height, which is 10 feet. So what he wants to do is he wants to install a sign that goes all the way up to the uppermost pole at the 17 feet. So that's the variance that he's asking for because there was no record in the file that the poles had been authorized at the 17-foot height. There had been no record of a variance granted. So he's not proposing to install the poles even higher than that, so say at a 23-foot height. So I commend him for deciding to eliminate the planter. I was concerned about how that would impact the site distance, so I think that that was a great decision for you to, to remove that. And certainly putting the braniels at the base, the small shrubs, I think would be appropriate and would improve the look of the area.
Bob, is there any comments that you had on this application?
No, actually, just to echo what Lori said, you know, the poles have been there for quite a while. The poles do exceed the allowed height limit, but, you know, the applicant wants to basically just take the existing sign and just slide it up the pole to the top to allow for better visibility on the bottom. It is, and the reason why he's here is because it exceeds the 12-foot height of the overall structure in the 10-foot height of the sign. Those are the limits that are set in the ZBA, in the zoning bylaws, I'm sorry.
Okay. So the relief that he is asking for is seven feet?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then, so I guess the picture I have, I don't know if you guys can see this, is this thing here, right, of what the proposed sign is. And so what you said, you're... Right, so is, so the wooden box that's underneath won't be there, nor obviously will the bushes be there. So you will start, so do you have an idea on when, what is the height of the bottommost sign from the ground?
From the ground? So we're looking at, I want to say it was from, from the top, the, the address will be about 18 inches. The logo will be about, I want to say, 57 inches. And then the next logo would be about 60 inches divided by the three other businesses that are inside the existing design center.
So it'll be about six, about six feet? Give or take?
Yes, give or take around that. Looks fine.
Okay. So based on this, based on this proposal, basically, you will have six feet of clearance. There won't be anything there, no planters, no bushes, nothing from the ground to the bottommost sign, six feet.
Minimal flowers and low-growing shrubs, just to beautify the area there.
Okay, cool. I guess I'll open up the questions from the board. Does anyone have any specific questions for the applicant? Mark?
Yeah, just to further up your questioning, there'd be nothing you can consider an obstruction for a driver to see from the far side of the sign down to see traffic on Main Street, then?
Yeah, there would be no impeding of the traffic. They'll actually open it up. If you look at the previous sign, there's a white blockage of the, the lettering sign that's in the way, and there have been pretty close calls of some accidents out front of that area.
Okay, right. And illumination of the sign at all?
It will be illuminated, yes.
On what hours?
Whenever hours are permitted to have it illuminated.
Okay. You're not looking for anything special?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Brad, go ahead.
Sorry, Fran. I'll jump ahead. So illuminated, illuminated from the inside, or how will they be illuminated?
Illuminated from the inside of the sign, which is existing right now. The, the existing sign that's there that has all the words on it has interior illumination.
And what are your current hours? And are you, so, you know, to follow up on Mr. Rutan's question, how are you planning on, what are the hours you're going to illuminate the sign?
We're, we're open from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It probably during the summer months wouldn't make sense to illuminate it because obviously the daylight hours, so I would probably extend it into the evening a little ways and have it turn off because there is a timer built into it. I can set it to whatever time it should go off and should go on in the morning.
Okay.
Whatever is allowed by the town.
Yep, okay. Nope, that's fine. Thank you. And my next question is, oh, so I was driving by there a couple times today. The, for lack of a better term, like the, the sandwich shop signage that you have at the bottom right now, that will be completely eliminated, right? It's like we just kind of put the, stick the letters in at the bottom and things like that?
Yeah, that whole white area will be removed. Yes. I don't like it there. It doesn't look good, and it's, it's, it's an eyesore, and it's blocked. That's what's blocking the traffic visibility.
Yep, yep. And just another comment, not a question, but I do believe what you're doing to this new sign does match the plaza where the neighborhood tavern is and things like that. It's, it's very reflective. So I do like the continuity, for the record. But thank you.
Fran, I think you were up next, if you're, if you want to go now.
Yes, sure. Thank you. Actually, Brad asked my questions. I just want to confirm both sides of the sign will be identical.
Correct.
And there's no moving tiles, no moving letters?
No digital. It's, it's, whatever's on there is, is going to be the logos, basically.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, I think you were up. Add your hand up.
Yes, please. Thanks, Paul. So in the application, under variance, you had traffic visibility and snow storage. So it's hard to think about snow now, but are you thinking that you're going to be plowing so that blockage would still be there? Your sign's not going to be blocked, but the visibility for traffic will be?
No, what I, what I plan on doing, since I actually don't own the property, with the plantings, we'll, we'll have a, an area that the landlord or whoever plows will not plow onto there. They'll plow around it. That's, that's kind of what we're looking to do, so there is no buildup of the snow bank there, and you can see right through the sign.
I would, that would be, that would keep that continuity and visibility going, so.
Correct.
Susie, I think your hand is up.
I'm just covered what I was going to ask about where the snow storage and if it would be stored where the sign is now, but it's not, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, it looks like your hand is up. I don't know if you had any other questions?
No, no, um, sorry, I'll click that. Sorry.
Okay, I guess, um, just one last, I just wanted to circle back. So Lori, you had sent a questions, comments, and recommendations letter, and just I wanted to follow up on your second bullet, which you basically identify that, you know, the property identifies as a one residential dwelling and one retail use. However, the proposed sign identifies two commercial tenants in addition to the design center. So Jeremy, like, is it just the Design Center West that's there? You have like tenant one and tenant two? Like, do you expect there to be additional tenants there, or?
No, we, we rent the whole entire space. It's for the design center. There's no additional tenants, but I have another business that I work out of here called Throwing Resources, as you see it on there, and then we have a, two other businesses that we incorporate under the design center that I would want to put the logo on. That's why it says tenant one, one and two there.
Mr. Chair?
Okay. Okay. Um, yeah, Brad, go ahead.
So you're going to have those two extra slots blank for now, correct? Or you could you plan on adding them as you add a tenant?
Um, I won't be adding another tenant. I have those other businesses. I could put the logos right. Up there, but I haven't I haven't done that yet. When this, when this was designed, it was designed for just to put the other ten, uh, the other businesses up thereafter.
Okay.
So I guess add asked another way. It's not next, it's not directly another tenant. It's just another business, but it's a business that you are running or on.
Correct. It would be, it would be a business that that I own.
Okay. Uh, I guess are there any other questions from um the board at this time? All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Um, if anyone has any. Questions or comments, um, you can raise your hand. Uh, if you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, uh, and then star six to unhook. I don't see anyone. With their hand raised at this time.
Chair.
Uh, yes, Brad?
I I move that we close the the public hearing for. Prop three twenty-six Main Street.
Second.
All right, Fran made a motion to close. Mark seconded. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Fran?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Paul is aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, we'll have the decision probably later this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yep, you're welcome. Alright.
Um, Mr. Chair, before we proceed, um, I do have a commitment at seven o'clock. Um, is it possible to recuse myself from the remainder of the meeting at this point? Or no?
Um.
Trying to see your face. So what do you think?
Well, since you are, you are the fifth person to vote on the two hearings that we just heard. My recommendation would be to discuss and vote on those two hearings so that we have the five voting members. Who were in attendance and were. You know, yeah, that would be my recommendation.
So, okay, no, that makes sense.
Right, and then both Suzie and Jeff would have to hopefully be able to attend and be elevated to voting members for the next two.
Does anybody have any objections to doing that at this point or?
I think that's a workable plan.
Okay.
Okay, if anyone has any objections, please let me know. I I can, I can suck it up and deal with it, but uh. Just want to make sure I don't want to step on, step out of line, step on your toes, things like that.
I guess the only question I would have, Suzie, are you available for the next um? Forty-five minutes or an hour or so?
I might just have to go off video again. But I can follow along, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Stay on, but with my palm trees to look at instead of my face.
Okay. Um.
I have, I have all my paperwork with me.
Fred, objection to kind of throwing a curve ball into this uh meeting?
Sorry, it it, I mean, just because I'm the Robert's rule person, I guess. I would, I would think if there is no objection and we take, since we're on Zoom, we take a roll call vote. That instead of Brad being a voting member for the last two hearings. That Suzie attests to the fact that she was present and able to follow along. She had opportunity to ask questions and she and Jeff will be the voting members along with myself, Paul and Mark. For the entirety of this um meeting and the four public hearings would be my recommendation. But I'll defer to staff if they want to to weigh in or, you know, that would be my opinion from a Robert's rule standpoint.
I would recommend that you vote on the first two hearings now. Uh, just in case, because Suzie wasn't uh wasn't necessarily available for all or a portion of the other two hearings, so. If if you folks could just go ahead and vote on the first two, that's what I would recommend.
Okay, I mean, I I I'm fine with that if everyone else on the on the board is also fine with that, so.
Objections, please let me know. I I do appreciate your flexibility.
Uh, yeah, I think that's fine. Um, so I guess, um, I don't know if anyone wants to start with the um. The 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 first case, twenty-two Stone Drive. Yes, Mark?
Okay, on twenty-two Stone Drive, I don't see any real controversy here. In fact, she's made a strong point that uh no one's really going to be stopping by the house, so there's no extra traffic. It's simply that she's set this up as a place where she's going to be doing business. Um, but there's no impact to the neighborhood. There's no. I mean. I I I just don't see any controversy on this, other than the same thing would happen at a normal residence of people stopping by.
Mr. Chair.
Is anyone else, Fred? Yep, Fred?
I mean, I can, I concur there. I don't think that there are any special conditions or restrictions that would need to be put on this special permit with site plan approval.
Okay. Uh, does anyone else have any comments?
I mean. Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Brad.
She could probably have done this without even going through the the hoops. Yeah, doing this on her own. So I commend her for doing it the right way. And in asking permission of the town. And like my comment was, I I I just have a few, we're going to see a few more of these now, you know, with the the new. You know, this is how we do business now with COVID, just working out of your home. So I have zero issue with this.
Hmm. Okay, yeah, and I guess I I what I would say is I would second all that. I mean, it doesn't seem like she's going to have any extra signage up. It's not, you're not even going to know she's running a business from there. Um, no clients or customers are going to be visiting her house. Um. I don't really see any other, any other issue with this. Uh, Suzie, your hand is up?
Um, I I was able to listen in and everything and I I agree. And I mean. She could be running her business and we wouldn't even know it, basically, without the sign, without people dropping by. So I. I agree that it, I'm happy that she came forward, but um I don't think it would have any impact on anybody. If I could go, I would, I would, I would for it.
Hmm. Does anyone else have any other comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair? I.
Yep.
I'd like to move that we allow a special permit with site plan for twenty-two uh Stone Drive. To allow the uh. Conduct of this uh Realtor business.
Second.
Okay, Mark made a motion, uh, Fran seconded. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Uh, Brad?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff?
Aye.
And I am. An I as well. Okay. Um. It's twenty-two Stone Drive. Alright, so the next case. Um, is for the variance of an installation of the signage of three twenty-six Main Street. Does anyone have any comments or? Yep, Brad, go ahead.
Yeah, so my main concern was, um, because originally with the the way the permit read, there was, you know. Easing traffic, making traffic a little bit easier, and the fact they're getting rid of all of that. Uh, shrubbery at the bottom, for lack of a better term. Um, makes total sense. And the comment that I did mention, it is, it does. It is in harmony with the sign that is that where neighbor now neighborhood tavern is. So there is continuity and and so. They're not changing the sign because obviously we don't have records of it, but those those black poles are still staying in the same place. They're just raising it up a little bit. Um, so. Uh, no objection here. Uh, I I think it's gonna improve uh. The landscape.
Okay, uh, Fred, I think you had your hand up.
Okay, so I mean, I have no problem with it. It does look much better. Um. But out of respect for the conversations that we've had over the past year over internally lit signs and how we're. Trying to get away from them, I would want us to put some type of time restriction on when they could be illuminated. He said that there wasn't going to be a long time, right? It wasn't going to be a lot of hours. But at the same token, during the summer, they probably never will be lit because his business of. Bob's going to say we can't do that. I don't know. But anyway, that would be my recommendation, if we can do it, to say something about two hours before and two hours after. You know, dusk or something like that, just so that we are respectful of the fact that they would not be on at ten or eleven o'clock at night.
Yeah, and just to confirm, his hours of operations were from ten AM to six PM is what he said. Uh, Bob, yes, you have written up?
Just to clarify, um, Mr. Chair. Um, the base rules for lighting of signs in Northborough is the signs need to be not lit from midnight to six AM. If you want to um add further restrictions on that, that's up to the board and their conditions in the, when they uh grant the special product.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So then, Mr. Chair, in. Then I would want to, because I would like to try to ease us out of that addiction. So, um. If it's businesses from ten to six, I think from eight in the morning to eight at night. As needed, right? Obviously, again, it won't happen during the summer, but that would be enough during the the winter hours. If that would be my recommendation.
Nope.
Okay.
I agree.
Um, does anyone else have any, uh, Jeff, yeah?
I would uh just like to have some form of condition or statement that the bottom six feet. Would remain open and visible, no plantings. And to the extent possible, you know, snow not be piled up to block the viewing uh for traffic.
I agree.
Um.
I'm here. Yeah, um, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, I I guess I could see that with his ground plantings, that you could have something growing up. I would not object to eighteen inches of ground plantings. Around the sign to pretty up the space. Um, but yeah, uh, I agree otherwise between both the. Visibility for traffic and also the eight to eight sounds like very fair with what he's given us. And if they want to extend the signage by some other tenant, they can come back to us.
Okay. Um. So I I guess I would say, or does anyone else have any other? Comments? I I guess what I would say is I do agree that we should definitely limit um the hours of of. Internally lit sign beyond from eight AM to eight PM. Sort of the two and two on either side of his operating hours, I think is a reasonable adjustment. Uh, I do like the fact that the bottom six feet. Um, is clear of obstructions. Um, I don't know if we can. If we need to be as specific as eighteen inches off the ground or can just say ground plantings, but I think we all are on the same page in terms of. What we are comfortable with in terms of as far as the plantings that go underneath the sign. Um. So, yeah, I don't think, I think those, I I don't know if there's any other conditions that we had listed, but those are the two that I had. I don't know, Laurie, if you had any. Do you have any color on how, what we can say regards to underneath the signs? Should we just say we should be clear of snow and? Anything, anything larger in terms of plantings there, I guess? Or is there?
Honestly, I do like the eighteen inches. Because I think that's clear measurement for everybody. That eighteen inches of plantings is okay, but anything more than that uh is not okay. Um, so I think if if you're, if the majority of you folks are okay with the eighteen inches. Then uh that at least removes the doubt.
Hmm.
So he can think of the eighteen inches when he goes to the um nursery and picks out what he wants to plant there. And of course, that's only during the growing season. So assuming that he's going to plant annuals and perennials for six months out of the year, there'll be nothing there.
Okay. Um, alright, so yeah, so I guess the 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 hours of operations from media to eight PM. Um, the the no snow uh to be piled underneath the sign and eighteen inches of plantings uh in terms of the conditions that we. Could be, would be voting on. Does anyone else have any other comments or feedback?
Just for clarification, Mr. Chair, eight to eight for the signs being lit, not for the business operation.
The signs for being lit, eight AM to eight PM.
Thank you.
Yes. If he changes his hours, it's, it doesn't matter. It'll be. Yep.
Well, then, Mr. Chair, I. I move that we approve the variance for three twenty-six Main Street for the construction of a sign. Beyond the ten foot. Maximum to seventeen feet, or we said seven feet of. Relief. With the following conditions, that the internally lit sign be lit. Um, between the hours of eight AM and eight PM and that the planting. Under the sign shall consist of low growing shrubs, perennials and annuals that do not reach the height of more than eighteen inches.
Second.
Alright, so Fran made a motion, uh, Jeff seconded it. Alright, uh, we'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Fran?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Uh, Mark?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay. That closes uh that one. Alright, Brad?
Everyone, your flexibility, thank you for very much for uh kind of doing something a little different. Uh, but you learn something new every time, I guess, right?
See you, Brad.
See you next month. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Alright, Brad. Okay, um, so the next thing on the agenda. Uh, is to consider the petition of Jessica Miller for a special permit and special permit with site plan approval in the groundwater district for. The operation of a home personal service uh on the property located at sixty-two Winter Street, map forty-two parcel ten in residential C zoning district and groundwater protection overlay. Area three, uh, and. Is Miss Miller on the. Call. Oh, here we go.
I am.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Doing pretty good. Okay, so if you could just kind of give us a rundown on um. What it is uh you are looking for.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to thank the members of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, committee for your review and consideration of my application. I appreciate it and the opportunity to present this evening. Um, I have been a resident of Northborough for about fifteen years now. Um, when I first moved to Massachusetts, I rented on East Main Street. And I have been a resident in my current home for almost thirteen years now at sixty-two Winter Street. I've been teaching yoga just about as long, it'll be fifteen years this November. Um, I'm also a Reiki master and certified postpartum corrective exercise specialist. Um, I have been teaching at the Core Connection here in town for the past ten years. So I have a well-established rapport with the community. Um, I'm very passionate about holistic wellness, women's health, and I believe that. My home business would um add value to our community as well as align with the values that our community uh already has. Um. So when I submitted my zoning request uh form, it was determined I would need three permits, one for the groundwater. Uh, a special permit and for site plan approval. I met with the groundwater committee uh earlier this month and they unanimously approved my permit. With the condition that I wouldn't be expanding my driveway or making any changes to the structure. So as you can see in the application, I just want to underscore that I'm not requesting any construction or any change to any existing structure or my property. Uh, the purpose of my application is to use an existing room of my home. For private yoga, Reiki and postpartum exercise appointments, as well as um to hold outdoor yoga. for private yoga, Reiki, and postpartum exercise appointments, as well as um to hold outdoor yoga in weather permitting months between like May and September. Um, and I have attachments to my application to support this, uh, one being for the inside. There is a schematic floor plan of my first floor that shows the relationship of the room that I would be using with the rest of the first floor, uh outlining windows, doors, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, um, and overall square footage, of which for the room in question is a hundred and ninety square feet. Um, as far as outside, I have a GIS map, pictures of my yard, as well as pictures of my driveway. And I've also uh included driveway measurements, um, taking into consideration the standard parking space and the overall square footage of my driveway. Um, I figure nine cars could fit into my driveway. Um, there would be no street parking permitted. So I've also provided a template of, you know, the website that I would create, which would require preregistration preregistration for, and this is just for outdoor, like preregistration for a class that would allow for like a parking policy um as well as indication of driving or, you know, carpooling, walking. In this way, we would um limit the number of cars to what's allowed in my driveway. Um, inside would be private appointments. So for Reiki, it's one-on-one, um, postpartum or yoga, semi-private or private. So you're talking, you know, no more than four at any given time, um, you know, if that. And um in addition to that, uh another attachment to my application is um a letter of support for my neighbors, of which I've received, um, I signatures of my neighbors that are on the sides of me and across from me. Um, you know, showing their support of my request. Um, I would not have any employees. And as far as sign, I really didn't intend to put up a sign. Um, I know I'm listening. Um, but, you know, I'd be open to whatever the requirements are for the planning and zoning board for something like that. I would probably do maybe something on my like a little plaque on the house or something like that, but I I wasn't really, you know, intending on having any big sign in my yard or anything like that. So, um, so anyway, thank you, and I open up and welcome questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, so what are, what would the uh hours of operation be?
So I have three kids, so I'm very busy. Um, as far as outdoor yoga, um, I would say you know, maybe two classes a week, I'd be more around like the weekend. Um, maybe like in, so I I I really, it wouldn't be like a, I would not gonna be holding like continuous classes throughout the week or anything like that. Um, as far as the private appointments go, it would really be, um, you know, it wouldn't be like a continuous, it wouldn't be like late into the evening. As far as outdoor yoga, it wouldn't be like past noise time, we're not, wouldn't be noisy doing yoga. But um, I don't know, I I guess I would be within the whatever the um boundaries are for for that, but usually for the weekend, it would be like morning, like a morning class. Um, and the classes are typically between an hour, an hour, and fifteen minutes. Um, if I did like an evening class, um, it would be um before, you know, it certainly wouldn't be too late into the evening or anything like that. So, but to potentially align with hours for people after work. Um, you know, I would say like eight would be like the latest. Um, but I I have to admit, like, my just kind of going through this, I haven't really, it's not like an ongoing, you know, business where, in the sense where I would just have people coming in and out, I would have like established classes set up um during the week. I know it's kind of a long way to answer your question, right?
Okay.
I've been established, yeah, I guess.
So just so, so you basically would have either classes outside where you could potentially fill up nine parking spaces with of people, right? Or you're doing, you know, private appointments in your house in sort of the side room here. Right? And the classes, the classes would be two times a week, right? Is that? It could be flexible.
I guess I would like flexibility, just because, you know, again, my schedule may shift, so I just, you know, I wouldn't want to be like, you know, I could only do two classes. Um, right now, if I looked at my schedule in terms of what I can fit in, but if, you know, my outdoor classes, I would love the opportunity to have one, you know, in the evening, in the morning, you know, um on the weekends, typically af- people are busy in the afternoon, so it's just, I'm really kind of off the top of my head, so I wouldn't want to be I'd be requesting that I wouldn't be restricted to two outdoor classes. But as far as the hours go, they're typically in the morning or in the evening after work, because that's usually when people can accommodate that. People usually aren't doing like a middle of the day, you know, type of class. Um, and then private appointments could vary throughout the day. Um, you know, just based on people's availability, but that that would be different. It wouldn't be like a a big, you know, group class or anything like that. And the outdoor would be between like May and September, um, just like weather permitting timeframe.
Okay. Um, I guess if you want to start with staff, um, do you guys have any comments or questions on for the applicant?
I actually met with Jessica, so she answered my questions uh at uh at that point, but I would recommend a condition of approval that would prohibit on-street parking.
Yes.
Okay, uh, and I guess I'll also note, um, you did go in front of the groundwater advisory committee?
Yes, and there's a letter that should also that uh they just submitted, that they um unanimously approved it. They just, again, said, as long as I'm not making changes to the driveway or of the building, which, again, I am not doing.
Right. And obviously, you're not using any chemicals or potentially toxic or hazardous stuff?
Nope.
In yoga, okay. Um, I guess, um, if anyone on the board has any comments or questions, uh, Mark?
Yes, um, a few things, uh. How many, how long do these classes typically last?
So, uh, typical yoga class is anywhere from an hour to an hour and fifteen minutes.
Okay, and if you're running an outdoor class and a thunderstorm comes up, what do you anticipate happens?
Wow, um, that's a very good question. Um, I would anticipate that doing unforeseen circumstances by acts of God, either whatever people are comfortable with, I I would imagine that they may have to leave, and I could reimburse their their money, and we could postpone for another time. Um, I have a garage um that I could open and have people sit under, but to be honest with you, having kids who play sports, usually if thunder starts, they can't go back on the fields for a half hour. So I wouldn't, I've, that's what's safe for our children. I would want that to be safe for my students. So in that um situation, since everyone is parked right on my driveway, I would probably just say it's probably best if they probably go home, and I'd be happy to reimburse them for, you know, they could come back another time.
Okay, I mean, is there any idea that you would construct a tent outside and have the class underneath? Or anything like that?
No. No, I would not do that.
Okay, and do you anticipate any of the uh, any attendees being dropped off, um, you know, a a fifteen-year-old dropped off of their parents' say, so that they couldn't if wouldn't be available, wouldn't have the ability to leave immediately?
That's a great question. Um, typically for, uh well, one part of your question, if there were people being dropped off, there are, there, because part of my plan, as you can see in the template, is that they could indicate if they are um driving, so that we can limit the number of parking, but then there could be people who walk, and there could be people who carpool, you know, with somebody else. So in those situations, I mean, of course, I'd be more than happy to offer shelter until the thunderstorm, you know, passed passed over or something like that. Um, as far as, you know, with the age that you mentioned, I mean, to be honest with you, I would probably when I go to set up this app, you know, kind of looking, um, these are great questions for me, because, you know, being this the first step for me to kind of get, go through, um, a lot of these details I know are going to be really important to consider. Um, so candidly, you know, being, this would be my first time being a business owner, so I I, there's a lot of details that I still need to, you know, figure out. Um, I probably would have uh a restriction for under, you know, just minors in general. Um, usually, you know, even like in in the studio space, um you know, we tend to have some of those uh in place, so I would say I would have to, you know, either if they have a phone, they can call somebody, and I keep them safe up until that point, but then at the same time, I think I would probably consider, you know, what my policy would be with minors in general.
Uh, yeah, I'm not meaning to be discouraging at all.
No, no, you know, I'm honestly, like, these are really good questions, so I'm glad that you're asking, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. If it helps, I do have a detached garage that is a decent size, so I could always open up the garage and keep people protected, whoever could be protected. So nobody would be stranded, and I'd have an opportunity for them. I mean, they're certainly welcome to come in the house, too, you know, I wouldn't kick anybody out by any means, but as far as being within the professional boundaries of things, I do have, you know, a shelter that I could offer being, I, the detached garage is right there. It'd be certainly easy to to use, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, um, Suzie, I think you had your hand up.
Sorry, my phone keeps like, it's a button. Um, Jessica, I thought your application was great, and I love that you um showed the the way that you would use the scheduling app or whatever that is. Um, I really like that. And I just wanted to um clarify, like, do you want to be offering any food or any of that right now? Food or beverages for sale or?
For sale? No, nothing like that. I mean, I may have like tea or water or something as a, you know, like a nice ad or something, but no, nothing for sale.
Okay, that was, that was basically my only question. I thought your um application, I know you just said that you're thinking of all new things, but um, I thought it was very thorough, like things I wouldn't even have thought of, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, um, Fran, you had written up?
Yeah, I actually also liked um your template as to how you're going to register people. It covers all the bases. So I do just want to ask, and again, I think it's a great idea. Uh, my husband does yoga and meditation, which helps his type A personality. But I don't like the music he listens to. Are you does your outdoor yoga or classes, are you going to have amplified music?
That's a great question. The beauty of outdoor yoga is that nature is our music, so I'm not a big fan of outdoor music. I say, listen to the birds. And if you have to hear someone mowing their lawn or a car go by, it's usually a challenge to stay focused. You know, my yoga teacher who I learned from, they practiced again um across the street from a firehouse, so that they could stay focused in meditation despite the chaos going around. So it's a added little challenge for the natural noise, but the beauty is the birds and everything else. So, yeah, thank you. But I in inside, I have some nice music, but outside, nature.
Great answer. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, Jeff?
So, yeah, it seems like there's two pieces, the po- potential classes outdoors and then the one-on-one mostly indoors, but the office that you have set up thirteen by thirteen, you, if it, if Mark's rainstorm came, could your thirteen people come in and do the yoga inside? Is that part of your potential business plan?
Um. I mean, I I would say, I mean, I'm, if they were okay with that, I'd be hap- I wouldn't say no to that. Um, as long as, I would say, as long as you guys are okay with that, I would, I would not turn people away and say, hey, come on in, you know, we can finish this, you know, inside. Um, I certainly wouldn't say no to that. Um, but if there was some restriction or I wasn't allowed to do that according to you guys, then I would say, um, you know, I wouldn't do that, but so I would be happy to have the option, but if, you know, I defer to you, um, if that's not allowed or not.
Can I ask that question then to to Bob? Is that part of what the special permit would allow?
In terms of number of people in the house?
Correct. And I say that because like Fran's husband, I have done a little bit of yoga, and uh in many cases, it started with a home where it wasn't yard yoga, but it was someone had a room that was set up, and you can get, you know, you only need three by six feet, side by side by side, you could get a lot of people in thirteen by thirteen. More than your driveway allow.
I I would, I would suggest that, you know, um um, you know, if you would have, you know, unexpected weather, and you wanted to move the class into the house, that's not going to happen too often. So if you have ten or twelve people inside the house, I don't think that's going to be a big deal. It's kind of akin to having a big family dinner. It doesn't happen too often, and if something were to happen, everybody, I'm sure, would be okay to get out. Um, you know, I would say as long as it's not a, you know, every week situation, you know, um, then then again, if it is once a week or a couple of times a week, you're probably going to be looking for another facility.
Yeah.
Because the business was good.
Yeah.
So I I don't have, I really don't have a problem with the interior stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, are there any other questions or comments from the board at this time? All right, this is a public meeting. Um, if you are in the audience and you would like to ask a question or have a comment, uh, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, um, it is star nine, try to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute. I don't see anyone with their hand raised. Anyone else with any other final comments or questions from the board or staff? Nope, okay.
To close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, Jeff made a motion to close, Fran seconded. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Uh, Fran? Mark?
Hi.
Suzie?
Hi.
And I am an I. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, while Suzie later on tonight.
Great, thank you so much.
All right. All right, um. So the next, uh, the next case is to consider the petition of Lexus of Northborough for a six-month extension of the zoning board of appeals, various decision nineteen dash seventeen, and amend the previous variance, ZBA cat case oh two dash oh six. Uh, regarding the proposed Lexus site improvement project, the applicant seeks to eliminate one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven square feet, building addition, allow maximum one hundred and ninety-one parking spaces, upgrade the existing wall sign, sign package for the Lexus dealership located at fourteen Belmont Street, map one oh nine parcel twenty-eight in the highway business district. Okay, um. Lori or Jen, do you know who the representative for the petitioner is for this evening? It says Mitch Cook is the name of the petitioner.
Mitch Cook, um, but the uh, the the point of contact that we've been dealing with is Daniel, gosh, what's his?
Alan? Daniel Allen?
Yes.
All right.
Mitch Cook is the owner of the property, I believe.
All right, so Dan, so Dan, if you're on, I made you a panelist. You should be, here we go.
Evening, I'm that thing I I hit all wrong link, and that's not, but um, Dan Allen, uh, we're good Fuller Engineering, um, here representing Alkin tonight, uh, involving the project at the Lexus dealership at fourteen Belmont Street. Um, this project was previously appeared before the zoning board back in twenty nineteen for a uh special permit and variance. Um, shortly after that approval, uh, COVID kind of hit and kind of hit, uh, it's a construction kind of stopped and everything, and project kind of put on hold. Um, it's now since picked back up and hoping to go to construction in August. Um, we previously received a variance, um, as Paul mentioned, for Um, we previously received a variance, um, as Paul mentioned, for the parking, the maximum amount of parking as well as some wall signage. Um, this variance is set to expire at the end of the month here, so we just wanted to kind of keep it active and everything on the head of construction. There's been some minor changes to the scope of work kind of involved, um, if I can share my screen here to kind of um explain that to you guys. That I'm coming clear with. Um, so uh, just kind of review the previously proposed site plan, as some of you may recall. Um, they originally had proposed some building improvements to renovate, kind of modernize the exterior and interior building. Um, as part of that, they had a uh sixteen hundred um square foot expansion of the showroom. And with kind of this expansion, there were some four ADA stall over here and they were proposed to relocate it on the side of the building to accommodate that. This building work is no longer moving forward, um, so the new site plan, as you can see here, um, they'll be maintaining those existing four parking spaces. And there's really not much other site work proposed other than some uh additional weight finding signage, which came up as some comments during the darkness provided, as well as some weight finding striping directing uh. Customers coming into uh the service area for custom parking. Additionally, just with the uh, the only other additional site item is that they're looking to install some electrical vehicle chargers at a future date, um, it won't be completed with the building work, but it was something they're going to be considering in the future and wanted to um. Just point that out here that they'll be providing some infrastructure to, to charging stations in the rear corner and then they're proposing um two uh along the building here. Kind of as a result of the site changes, uh, we've previously been approved for a total of one hundred ninety um. Spaces mapped and with no changes being proposed anymore, we're just maintaining the one hundred ninety-one existing spaces and just are hoping to update the approval to uh reflect that. Um, relative to the building elevations and some of it, it's really a minor change, um. This is the original uh layout, we see they're proposing three signs, one Lexus of Northboro, one Lexus logo and one service sign here. Um, the new plans, really, the only real change is this Lexus of Northboro sign is shifting um about thirty feet in front of the building, so it's really, it's going to be the same signage I'm bearing. Uh, really not much different than what was previously approved. I think. I think that's really, really about it, um, happy to open up to uh any questions you guys have.
Okay, um, I guess. Uh, Lori, if we could just start with you and just your, um. Just your comments on um just the project and recommendations.
Sure. I did not have any issues with these proposed changes. Uh, the one clarification that I wanted to make is originally this came in as a uh variance extension. Um, however, I'm hoping that you will also approve the minor modifications to the special permits and the site plan to reflect. The addition of one parking space, uh, because originally the application only. Provided for a hundred and ninety parking spaces and with this change, it would be a hundred and ninety-one. Um, as well as the elimination of the one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven square foot building addition. And uh the change in layout and configuration of the parking spaces. Um, so I put that in my written comments to you, I just wanted to make sure that those things were addressed and that you weren't. Just going to vote on the variance aspect of it. That you would also vote on the, the minor modifications to the special permit and the site plan review, so we wouldn't have to. Have him uh come back to address those issues.
Okay, and is the um, the modification of the special permit and site plan approval. Also included in that uh case nineteen seventeen?
It was, yes.
Okay. So essentially what you're. Asking for is the extension of the variance for nineteen seventeen with the two uh adjustments in the parking spaces and then um. The elimination of the building addition.
Yes, uh, the issue, so all of those approvals were encompassed in a single decision back in two thousand nineteen. Uh, the difference is that the variance expires one year prior to the special permit. Um, so even though the special permit aspect of the decision is still good. The variance aspect uh expires, so it's a little bit confusing since they're all wrapped into a single decision.
Okay. Thank you. Bob, do you have any uh comments or about this or?
The only comment I really had was the fact that um, I, Lori wasn't here when this first went through. Excuse me, a few years ago. And if I remember, I went through with some discussion, but it wasn't contentious by any means. Um, so I went through the first time without too much of a hitch. Um, knowing that they're coming back and they're actually reducing the scope that was originally approved. Um, I really see no issue for it and I think the comments that Lori made are quite appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, does anyone else, does anyone from the board have any questions or comments? Uh, Jeff, I think your hand is up.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, so. The special permit is two years, the variance, was there an original variance and has that already expired and we have to extend that?
So the variance is actually expiring, I think it was yesterday, May twenty-second, so it was only good for a year, but then it was granted an additional extension because of the COVID. Uh, provisions, uh, so if I remember correctly, it was supposed to, uh, Dan, certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but was it May twenty-second yesterday?
I'm, yeah.
Or two days ago.
The thirty-first, it was set to expire.
Okay. Right, but the special permit, if you uh look in the zoning bylaws, special permits expire within a two-year timeframe, so there's still sufficient time. Uh, they are planning on beginning construction in August. Uh, so they shouldn't have any issues with the timeframe for the special permit, once they start construction, then they're good.
Thank you, I'm, I'm in favor of it, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a T that had to be crossed or I dotted.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Um, does anyone else from the board have any questions? Uh, Fran?
What, I, I just, I don't remember specific, is this the property that actually? Is partly in Westboro and partly in Northboro? No? Okay, that's not what that line is, I, okay, all right, thank you, then I have no questions.
Uh, the, the Honda dealership has um property in both towns, but from what I can tell, uh, the, the Lexus of Northboro is entirely in Northboro.
Okay, thank you. Um, does anyone else on the board have any questions? Sorry if I can't see your hand. Um, all right, this is a public hearing. Um, if you are in the audience and want to ask a question, raise your hand. Please, uh, you're on your phone, star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute. I don't see anyone with their hand raised, um. Does anyone else have any other questions or final comments? If you do, just shout it out. Okay. I don't have anything else.
I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
All right, Mark made a motion to close the hearing, uh, Jeff seconded. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Mark?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Fran?
Hi.
Suzie?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Okay. Thank you very much, Dan, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, hello, wh- wh- which case you guys want to start with, whether it's this one or?
Let's go with sixty-two winter, should be fast and easy.
Yep, Mark, you want to, you want to start?
Okay, um. You know, she's. She's setting up a home business, uh, she doesn't have everything figured out, but I think she's, has the best of intentions of figuring it out in a positive way. I also think that she has control of the size of the business for what it is. And as our building inspector has pointed out, if the business grows explosively, she'll be looking for a new facility anyway. Um, so I think this is a. Once again, not a detriment to the neighborhood, she doesn't look to be scheduling classes at six AM sunrise or anything uh. That would be impacting the neighbors uh too badly.
Uh, so I think the only. Condition I had was to prohibit uh on-street parking, but. Um, do, do you also want to prohibit or? Allow for, um, limit the hours of operation? As well, or is that something?
I don't think it's necessary for this type of business, personally.
Okay. Uh, Suzie, you have your hand up?
I agree with what, um, Mark said, she was, you know, the things that she's not sure about, she was looking for. For guidance and she has a great plan set up and the scheduling and the, the parking aspect of the scheduling, which I would have never thought of doing online. Um, I, I think it would be um a plus for Northboro. Um, and I agree with Bob too, that she can always move to a different place should she need to.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chair, the only other um condition is that um from the groundwater advisory, that there's no um expansion uh to the driveway or the building.
Right, yeah. Okay. Does anyone else have any uh other comments or questions? All right.
No.
Say, we want to make a motion?
I move that we grant a uh special permit uh for sixty-two Winter Street to allow the at-home business. Um, of a yoga studio to operate uh with the restriction that there'll be no allowed on-street, on-street parking.
And the groundwater.
And uh no expansion of either the driveway or the building.
Second.
Uh, Mark made a motion and Jeff seconded. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Mark?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Fran?
Hi.
Suzie?
Hi.
And I, and then I. Okay, great, thank you. Um. Fourteen Belmont Street. So I guess. From a timing perspective. Lori, do you think the extension? If the, if the variance expires on five thirty-one? Does the decision have to be signed within the next like seven days? Is that how, how it would work or?
Ideally, ideally, the decision would be approved prior to the expiration of the uh variance.
Okay. Um. Does anyone have any comments or? Questions about? Um. About this case, which is basically. In addition to being an ex- an extension of the variance nineteen seventeen that was approved. Uh, in twenty nineteen, um. Changing the number of parking spaces allowed from one ninety to one ninety-one, so a delta of one. Um, and then the elimination of the building addition. Of. Eleven hundred fifty-seven square feet.
As well as shifting, shifting the location of the um, of the wall sign thirty feet.
Okay. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments about?
I just, Mr. Chair, I think Mark just lost connectivity. Connectivity.
Uh, you're right, he did. Okay. No, I don't, I don't think he lost power, but um.
He's back, I think.
He's coming back.
I see you coming back, yeah.
Yeah, hey, Mark.
Um.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we, we didn't really discuss anything else, um, you know, we have the three adjustments to the extension of the variance, um. Does anyone have any other questions or comments um about this uh case?
Yeah, um, if I'm.
Yep, yeah, Mark, go ahead.
In the past, when we approved this, initially, there was the, the big thing was the signage on the front of the building. Um, and that our feeling is it's on Route nine, um, it's. A big area, you need big signage and also they know how to run their business as far as making it attractive. And not uh intrusive on Route nine, felt that it was still in good taste, so. Um. Uh, continuing this, this variance and uh special permit just seems very reasonable. They're not asking for anything more.
Okay, uh, yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
I agree with Mark, I think the changes are relatively minor and the scope is a little bit less, so we approved it before, I would support approving it again.
Uh, yeah, I guess, but, yep, Fran, go ahead.
Uh, just one question, if we grant six months and they can't get it done, are they allowed to ask for another six months?
They, I believe they just have to get started, don't they?
Okay.
Yeah, they pretty much just have to put a shovel in the ground and get started uh within the six-month period of time, but if. It can't happen, then certainly they're welcome to come back and ask for another extension.
I was just wondering whether we would extend it beyond six months if they would not be able to, but that's fine, thank you.
Right, and I, I guess, I guess they were, they were fine, but I mean, six months was communicated prior. In, in advance of this meeting and I don't, I didn't hear anything from the applicant that said that six months wasn't going to be doable. So. Um, does anyone else have any other comments or questions? If not, um, we can entertain a motion. Yep, Mark, go ahead.
I move that we grant both the uh special permit and uh. And the variance with the modifications for the property at fourteen Belmont Street.
Second.
If you could just specify the, the time in the motion, the six-month extension, or if you want a different period of time, that'd be helpful.
I would tend to grant them a, a year extension just because. You know, I'd like to delay them coming back if something happened in the fall and they couldn't get started to the spring.
I'll second that.
Yeah. So I would grant it up to a year.
Okay, um, Mark made a motion, um, Jeff, Jeff seconded the motion. Um, are there any other uh discussion points about the adjustment from six months to a year? Okay, uh, we'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Mark?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Fran? Fran?
Oh, I, I sort of said I, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Suzie?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. Okay. I think do we? Are there, did we get minutes from our March meeting? Is that the only thing we have left to do or to look at?
Yes, I believe those were sent out. It was the meeting from March twenty-second.
Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from March? Or to re-watch the video?
I did. I move that we accept the minutes from March twenty-second, twenty-two meeting as submitted.
All right, so Fran made a motion to approve the March twenty-second, twenty-two minutes and at least Suzie seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Fran?
Aye.
Suzie?
I, I think that was my first seconding.
Mark?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is just our next meeting, which is June twenty-first of twenty twenty-two. And I guess the one question I would have for the board is there, your thoughts on potentially starting, resuming starting meetings at seven o'clock as opposed to six o'clock? I believe historically, our meetings have always been at seven when we were in person. And I'm not sure if we're going to be in person for a while, but I think with some people going back to work, not in Northboro, and with activities at after-school. I just wanted to sort of gauge people's opinions on pushing back the start time from six to seven, starting next month. Fran?
You read my mind. I was going to ask if we could do that because my interjection is pretty bad when we have to meet at six and you have to get home from work, so I would be fine with that.
Okay, Suzie, I think your hand is raised.
I'm sitting in a soccer parking lot right now in the mini van, so I'd be all for it. If I could, that would be great, thanks. I vote yes.
Okay, I don't think we need to necessarily take a vote. I think we could just, Brad doesn't get a chance to make an argument since he left early anyway. So I guess, I guess for next month, we can start meeting at seven. Obviously, if we get fifteen cases, which I don't, Lori, I don't know if you know how many cases are on the docket for next month. But assuming that there's not more than, I don't know, ten.
Three scheduled already for the next meeting, so.
Okay, great.
It's gotten very busy lately.
Okay, that's good. So then, yeah, I guess for next month, then we can just have our meeting scheduled for seven o'clock on the twenty-first of June. And then go at seven o'clock from that point forward, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, Bob, sorry.
Just, just a point, I know there's a lot of activity typically before a ZBA meeting like the Monday before. But we have June twentieth off as town hall employees for Juneteenth. So plan your schedules accordingly because I know there's a lot of stuff that goes on the day before a meeting. Just, just to keep you posted.
Okay, Lori, yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to talk to you folks about possibly changing the format of decisions going forward. One thing that kind of has been anomaly, something I'm not used to when I came to Northboro, is the inclusion of the minutes in the decision. I was wondering if you folks would be open to removing that dialogue from the decision. Certainly, folks who are interested in hearing what happens at the, at the minutes, I mean, at the meetings can refer to the meeting minutes, which are of course the, the real kind of narrative as to what happens at the, at the meeting. So that way we can expedite the decisions, the turnaround on the decisions. We don't have to wait until the meeting minutes are done first before we're doing the decisions and getting those approved. So in the case of the fourteen Belmont Street, that would be particularly helpful. So some of you folks would be interested in, also make for shorter decisions.
I guess I would say I would be fine with that. I think it's probably more noise than anything, just in terms of adding what people's comments were about or questions in terms of things that we were either confirming or trying to get points of clarification for, whether or not that's even pertinent for a decision. Or whether that's pertinent to be included in the decision. And like you said, you know, we have minutes, there are YouTube videos if everyone needs to see, to watch our meetings, so I don't really have a concern with it. I don't know if, what anyone else thinks, but I guess that's my original or initial assessment. Jeff, yep?
I agree. I think it's a very good idea that the public record will be still available, but the decision will be just about the decision, so. And I think having the ability to get it out sooner helps everybody.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I would also be in favor.
So I guess Michelle just sent an email saying that the June meeting is on the twenty-eighth. So it's not the twenty-first. So just a point of clarification there. Our next meeting is on June twenty-eighth. Sorry, sorry about that, Bob. It's the fourth Tuesday. Cause the first is a Wednesday, so there you go.
Then you can be as busy as you want on Monday.
Okay, great. Okay, does anyone else have anything else, Fred? Yep.
Sure, we don't need to do anything with the very large packet that was mailed to each of us regarding the Lauren Street property. I assume I wasn't the only person that got it.
I, yeah, I got it as well.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, have you heard anything else?
It looked to me like saber rattling, I mean.
I just meant from Lori, we don't, we don't have to do anything, it's being taken care of. The appeal of the Lauren Street.
You're muted, Lauren.
Lori, I, I think you, you're still muted. Yep, still muted.
My dog just grabbed a bag of potato chips and my daughter was rustling it out of his mouth, so I missed all of it.
I think Fran was just asking about the, the appeal from Lauren Street and whether or not there was anything that this board needed to do or address.
I am not aware of any action items for you folks at this time. But I will definitely let you know if there's something that I need from you.
Okay, great. So next, next meeting is, sorry, yep, yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
Was that just sent to the voting members or have they not figured out where I live now? I didn't get it. That's okay.
Just let me know, I could, I'll hand deliver it to you, Jeff. Okay, I don't have anything else. If anyone else has anything.
Second.
All right, Jeff, Jeff made a motion to adjourn. Mark seconded. Roll call vote, Jeff?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Suzie, is she still on?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Okay, we'll see you guys next month at seven PM on the twenty-eighth.
Good night, everyone.
Job, Mr. Chair.